We've been in closed session and I'm open to a motion to return to open session.
Motion.
Second.
To come out of recess.
Second.
Who was the second? Paul and Jamie.
Aye.
Aye.
We will now have another roll call and follow with the declaration and the invocation by the Reverend Greg Turner.
Herney.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Let us pray. Gracious God, you are the source of our life, the center of our devotion, and the one who directs our hearts and the way that we should go. And though we follow you imperfectly and our understanding is incomplete, we ask your blessing upon this assembly tonight on all those whose business it is to conduct the affairs that affect this community. We thank you for their service. We thank you for all those within this community who are servants to this community, and we ask your blessing upon their lives. We ask that you direct the affairs that take place tonight, that they may be done according to your will and purpose, for we ask it in your son's name.
Amen. Amen. A blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move any further, we have in the past had consistent complaints that people could not be heard from up here or when they're commenting from the podium. Now, as you can see, it is possible for us to be heard, but please do speak into the microphone that you're addressing. And we will move to public comments, and I'll start on the front on the right. And Detective Early.
If I may. Mayor Anderson and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Sergeant Tim Early, and I have been employed with the Lebanon Police Department for approximately 10 years. Currently, I'm assigned to the Bureau of Investigations. I would like to take a few moments to read a letter that was prepared by and signed by the sergeants, corporals, and officers of the Lebanon Police Department. This was dated January 24, 2015. Dear Mayor Anderson and City Council members, we, the sworn officers of the Lebanon Police Department, come here today as a collective voice.
Detective Early, would you pick that microphone up? I'm holding the show.
Sure. Let me start over. We, the sworn officers of the Lebanon Police Department, come here today as a collective voice and would like to address Proposal Bill Number 4051, which is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. As you can see, there is a large number of sworn officers present, not to be intimidating or to apply pressure to the voting members of the council, but to demonstrate the support we have for the implementation of the union. There is always safety in numbers. Individually, we fear retaliation, as we have witnessed individual officers in the past, but as a collective group, we feel secure. As you may or may not know, as recent as last week, we met with a representative from IUPA, which is the International Union of Police Associations. In the meeting, 70 percent of the eligible sworn officers elected to join that union, once the on-duty officers who could not attend due to being on duty were briefed on the IUPA and the benefits of joining the IUPA, 100 percent of all eligible officers submitted signature cards indicating their desire to participate in the IUPA, bringing the total to 26 sworn officers. A petition has been submitted to the State of Missouri Department of Labor requesting establishment of our local union with all 25 of these signatures attached. We feel the timing of this proposed ordinance is direct retaliation for our recent decision to establish a union. For example, one of the supporting factors in this belief is when we discovered the proposed ordinance in the upcoming agenda, we noticed that there was no fact sheet attached to the ordinance as in a common practice. We feel the proposal ordinance is a deliberate attempt to delay, interfere, and disrupt the process we have immediately initiated. At this time, we respectfully request the first reading of Bill Number 4051 be dismissed as our petition has already been submitted for approval. Thank you for your timing, hearing our concerns. Respectfully submitted, 25 signatures from the Lebanon Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Individually. On the left side. Anybody have anything they want to talk about tonight? And we'll move to discussions and presentations, there being none that I know about. If anybody have anything they want on this. And when come to approval of warrants.
Most approve.
Second.
Any specific warrant that anybody wants to bring up?
I have a question. Page 13. It's the signs. I think it would be Richard for $53,000. Are those the school signs?
Yeah, that was a grant that we received, the Safe House School Grant. That's, we'll be closing that out.
Okay, so in and out?
In and out.
In and out, okay.
Hundred percent.
All right. That wasn't my only question.
The only thing, we did have to extend some, we did have to extend some electric incandels that went over on Easter, but pretty much.
When you put it in the wrong place and had to move it? Just kidding.
We didn't install it, contractor did.
The contractor.
Okay, I'd like to ask council members speaking to their microphone also.
I have a question on 81363, Archer Elgin, for $5,186 for inspection. What did we inspect?
They're actually doing inspections on that project. That was inspections of all the sign placement. It's for that grant. In order to get the grant, you have to contract the engineering and also the construction inspection services.
Okay, so this.
What she questioned then, okay.
That's correct.
And then we have one for Cochrane for $550 for a shelter. Which, what shelter is that?
John questions.
Okay, well, it's not that big a deal. I was just curious which one it was. Now, I have some questions on, which I'll wait until, I'll just bring it up in council comment, I won't go through them now. It's maybe something we might want to discuss a little bit later, you know, so I'll just wait till council comment to bring it up. It's not a big deal.
Anybody else? Have roll call.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Under financial reports, we'll deal with the December Treasurers' report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
May I have roll call, please?
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
And the quarterly investment report.
Most approve.
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
And now we move to ordinances, and there being no second readings, we'll move to first
and second, and start with Council Bill 4047, which deals with park improvements, and Park Director is not here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who was the second?
Any questions? Go.
Is overlay going to be enough on Kent? Because it's kind of nasty down there.
Yeah, so once we put the curb and gutters in, then we'll do a two-inch overlay to do the whole thing, so that'll box everything in. And so that should take care of the entire scope of the park.
Clean it up.
That'll make it look a whole lot better.
It needs it.
Yes.
Once it's all said and done, I mean, I know some of it's coming out of the street now, but it looks like we'll still, we'll be a little bit under budget of what's coming out of Fund 22.
Correct. We was able to save a little $2 in staff, labor costs, and equipment costs because we essentially absorb some of that sun cost, so it's absolutely, we got it. From Fund 22, that'll be in the bill.
Okay.
Anybody else? Have roll call.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Council Bill 4047 has been passed and is now ordinance 5300. Council Bill 4048 deals with the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-350 truck from Lindsay Ford.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second. Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Council Bill 4048 has been passed and becomes ordinance 5301. Council Bill 4049 deals with the purchase of thermal imaging cameras for the fire department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And thank you for sending that out ahead of time. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Council Bill 4049 has passed and is now ordinance 5302.
Council Bill 4050 deals with the purchase of a dump truck.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second, second. Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herney.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4050 has passed and is now ordinance 5303. That concludes the first and second readings. We move to the first reading on Council Bill 4051, which is the bill that you heard about, and if passed tonight, will be heard for our second reading two weeks from tonight. May I have a motion?
Do we do that and then discuss?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Question or comment?
Do you want us to start with an introductory? I know Ransum's walking in as we speak, so he's going to be here to answer a few of those questions. I'm going to have Chris give you a quick summary, and then we can go into some discussion.
The Council Bill 4051 code amendment relates to a Supreme Court decision that was entered in 2012 that expanded collective bargaining for municipal employees that did not have the right to do that before. That was a statutory prohibition that the Supreme Court abolished, basically. That case in 2012 then prompted municipalities to come up with policies and procedures for collective bargaining on new, or employees that had a new right to collective bargaining that didn't have it before. This ordinance, this proposed change, I would let Mr. Ellis, I think, address specifically. He had authored this as a proposed procedure for the city. I review it. I concur that it complies with the Supreme Court decision and is an appropriate procedure and policy for municipal employees to go through if they wish to unionize or collective bargaining. But again, it's a procedure. It's not particularly pro or con. It's simply a procedure that you address specifically to the council.
It was my suggestion.
Is that wrong?
Yeah, I think. I'll get closer. It was my suggestion to Chris and Chris that the city needed a framework for collective bargaining. The statute itself, and that is the collective bargaining statute, does not, it specifically excludes certain groups. And one group that it excludes is teachers, and one group that it excludes specifically is police officers. There are others, but those are two of the groups that are excluded. There is no procedure, therefore statutorily, for those groups to be able to bring a petition for an election and have an election to be recognized by a public body in the state of Missouri. I'm sorry I missed the first part of Chris's statement. I may overlap some of the things he said, but in 2009, the Missouri Supreme Court, in the Independence School case, decided that everyone, every public employee has the right to collective bargaining. But they, but the legislature has yet to fix the statute that has exceptions. So subsequent cases before the Supreme Court have indicated that, and other courts in Missouri have indicated, that there's a need for the school, for the school districts, for teachers, and also other public bodies to have and develop a framework for collective bargaining. That's what the Independence case said. So, I mean, I would say offhand that nearly 100 percent of the school districts in the state have a framework for collective bargaining. Those that have, the Missouri School Boards Association certainly do have it, and the municipalities certainly are moving that way. The statute, the case law in Missouri is developing such that if you don't have that, it causes a great deal of problems for you. So my suggestion was to have a developed framework for collective bargaining that established a practice and a procedure, so if there is a petition by one of the groups of employees who has, is excluded under the statute, doesn't have the right to go to the state board of mediation for an election, that it be taken care of through that procedure. And this is the procedure that I came up with. The procedure itself, frankly, is not too much different than the one that the city of Springfield developed. And there are other cities that, we have one other city that has this particular statute. The city of Ozark, I think, has looked at it. I'm not sure if they passed it. I'd be glad to take questions.
What would happen if these two were to cross in the mail, so to speak? Though, according to this letter we've got, the petition has been submitted, and we're working on that ordinance tonight. What happens if the petition comes back before or after or whatever? I mean, we need to do this later than now or whatever. But if they cross in the mail, who, which one, which one controls?
My personal belief is that, you know, you're evidencing at least tonight the intent to develop this, and you've got a draft, and it should be short. This is first reading, you've got a second reading coming, and that's all it takes. That's certainly not enough time to, I mean, you're not going to deny the petition, you're going to go forward with the petition. But if you have the framework for it set up, and you have that set up in a reasonably quick period of time, which would be the next meeting, I suppose, as long as there's agreement among the, on the council, that you would go with that arrangement?
I have a question. When we started with unions with our electric company two, over two years ago, why wasn't this brought out then, or when the sewer, or the water, or the fire department, any of them started talking unions? Why did it come out? I just think the timing is really, really pretty bad right now.
All of those groups are not excluded.
Right, they're meet and confer, so we're basically talking only one department in the entire city, correct?
Well, you have, I'm sorry?
We're talking only one department for the entire city.
Because that's the only department, only group of employees that you have that are excluded under the act. I mean, you don't have teachers, and you don't have National Guardmen.
But we knew it was coming, so why didn't we even do it six months ago, or a year ago, or two years ago?
Ms. Herney, the problem is that the, the law in Missouri is developing, I mean, it's not like the legislature said, okay, here's the change in the law, everybody get in compliance with it. It's not happened that way. We first had the Independence case, we had the Ledbetter case that followed that some two or three years later, and most recently, we've had a case in Grandview that's only at the circuit court level, but it's being appealed, that raises this particular issue and has alerted everybody to this issue. And the issue is that if you don't have a framework for collective bargaining established, then you have a problem, because there's no way to have an election, and the court may decide who's going to, who's going to be recognized, the court may decide who's going to be in the unit, and all of those matters ought to be determined at the local level and not by some court.
I'm going to make a personal statement right now, then. Had we done this even three months ago, six months ago, I would have been in favor of it. However, with everything, and I, I know, Chris, you will laugh at me when I say this, but with everything going on in our state, in Ferguson, in national news, I don't think this is the time to, to single out our police department, which I think we're doing by this ordinance. We're singling out, granted, they're the only ones that don't meet, that meet and confer, but I just think the timing is very pitiful.
And I don't want to be contrary to you, Ms. Herney, but I'm having trouble with the belief that there's anything bad about this.
Oh, I don't think there's anything bad about the ordinance.
It establishes a procedure to get us to the end, to let everybody have an opportunity to vote on the question of whether or not they want a particular group, in this case, I think it's probably the Fraternal Order of Police, but I'm not sure, whoever it is, it may be a local group. I haven't read this, I'm sorry, I haven't had the benefit of it. And to determine whether or not they are to be the bargaining representative, and if, in fact, there was an election, the results from that, and I assume that you all, by passing this ordinance, would then agree to recognize the winner of that, if there was a winner. And the process goes further to explain that you're going to follow the collective bargaining that's established by law. In effect, do the same thing that you're supposed to do for groups that are going to be, that are subject to the law itself. There is no difference here, and there's no attempt to deny anybody their rights. In fact, you're making it easier to reach the ultimate conclusion that may be reached during the process.
We were given that letter tonight, just like you had to read it, so why don't we let them have a couple of minutes to read it?
Sure. Okay.
I just, you had said you hadn't read it, so I thought maybe you should read it.
I have now.
Okay.
It's not the Fraternal Order of Police, you know that now. I will say that, it's my opinion that if a petition's been submitted to the State of Missouri Department of Labor, that it's not going to do anything, because they're still excluded, the police are still excluded under the, under 105, 510, I think it is, Missouri statute, which, which has, is the old, what I used to call meet and confer statute, the collective bargaining statute, that covers all other public employees except for teachers in essence. You know, this is the reason that a framework for collective bargaining needs to be developed in an ordinance form by this body, so that there would be a vehicle for these officers to be able to have an election, if that's what they so want.
So you're saying this vote that they took, means nothing?
No, I, the vote, they, they say they want to be members of that, that's fine.
But it wasn't an official election.
I'm picking on the second paragraph that says they submitted a petition to the State of Missouri. I mean, that, there is, there is no vehicle for them, because they're excluded under the act. Police are excluded from, from being able to be, under the Missouri statute, police are excluded from being able to be represented, and they can't take a petition to the state board of mediation. That's what I was saying earlier. That's what the Independence case said with respect to teachers, same difference. They're excluded from the act. They can't bring a petition to be represented to the state board of mediation. That's why the Supreme Court in the Independence case said, everybody, every public employee has the right to collective bargaining. And you can't deny them that right. It's under Article I, Section 29 of the Missouri Constitution, that's their right. And so, in the case of the school district, Independence School District in the Independence case, it said, you must develop a framework for collective bargaining, and that includes a process by which those people can vote. And it includes a process of what happens after that vote. And the school board, school district did that, and every, just nearly every school district in the state that I'm aware of has now a policy that is a framework for collective bargaining. As I said before, it's my impression that municipalities have not gotten that far, because there's never been a case before, the Grandview case, dealing with municipalities on police. And once that happened, municipalities are starting to do it. Should it have been done three months earlier? Probably so. Chalk it up to me, to be the person that did it incorrectly. We probably should have had it three months ago. But that doesn't mean that because it should have happened three months ago, it shouldn't happen now, because it's still a fair, fair procedure. And I would be glad to talk to anybody about the procedure that's set up in there.
But the vote tonight, if it was to pass, would say that we are working on it so that their letter would then, or their feelings would be null and void, because.
I don't think so.
But that's what you said earlier, that it would be, that's what you said earlier, it would look like that we were working towards it. So it would already be started.
Towards a framework.
Okay, he asked, he's talking. Hang on.
They're saying that they have filed a petition with the state. I don't think that's going to be there. I mean, the petition needs to be filed with this body.
Which I think by giving us this.
I don't know that that's what this is.
I think it is, and by the statement.
Well, if it is, then you can deal with it under your procedure, assuming you're going to pass it. If you're not going to pass it, then I don't know what you're going to do, because you're not going to have a framework for collective bargaining.
So this ordinance, in reality, sets forth, it's in no way prohibitive, it just sets forth a procedure. forth a procedure for them to carry through it.
To bring it to you.
To bring it to us.
And a method by which, there are several decisions that have to be made along the process of developing, you have to determine if the unit's appropriate, and the persons that are proposed to be in the unit are appropriate, that's one thing, there's a method for determining that. You have to determine, you know, when you're gonna have an election, where you're gonna have the election, and there's a method for that. And that's with an independent body, it's not with you. You get somebody that knows what they're doing, but not, not somebody that's employed by the city, or a contractor to the city, and not somebody that's employed by the union. You get, I'll tell you the way I did it in Springfield, we ran an election, huge election, for all the teachers in the Springfield schools, 1,800 teachers. We had two elections, and we didn't have one single complaint by anybody about the way the election was held. We got an independent third party, people that I know that worked, used to work for the National Labor Relations Board, had them come in, run the election. Nobody, the NEA, the MSTA, the school district, nobody could...
So if we don't have this procedure in place, I'm taking that there's no way for them to move forward with this action? I mean, they have to have this to get to the next step.
That would be my opinion.
That's what I...
But they're saying...
Are we allowed to speak and start again right now?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Fox.
Okay, thank you, very much, ma'am. Basically, if you don't mind, fellow police officers, we're not familiar with who you are, we, we didn't get an introduction, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you. I don't know if anybody else can, but I can't...
I'm sorry. I'll hold it, I'm sorry.
I'm Ransom Ellis, I'm the attorney of Springfield, Missouri. I represent the city and have for a long time, one person I know.
Okay, thank you, sorry, we didn't know who you were when you were talking. Basically, the concerns that you have...
I don't know who you are.
I'm sorry, I'm Detective Fox, I work at Lebanon Police Department, under the Bureau of Investigation, with my supervisor here and my fellow officers, and their families as well. Basically, we have a lot of these issues that, that you're bringing up, already taken care of, through the union that we've decided. We noticed that you have the city attorney, we have you representing, and we have you guys informing our city council of all of these issues. However, we were not given the opportunity or the time, or the, the information, that we should probably bring our attorney today to represent our side, and also let you guys know the answers to the same questions that you're asking him, and you would hear our answers. And that way, you guys could make an informed decision from both sides.
Who's representing you?
Detective Burley, would you like to come up and answer that?
We read a letter before you arrived. It's on the letter.
That addresses all those questions for you.
Pacific Attorney.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, I just want to know, because I know a lot of people.
Sure, I'm...
Sally Barker, for instance, represents...
I'm sure you do, but regardless of that, I, my point is, we would like an opportunity for our representative to be here to address all these exact same questions, in the exact same way that these, these individuals have been able to do.
And you'll have that opportunity again, two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
Yet assuming that the first reading passes.
Okay, and if it does not?
Ma'am?
If it does not pass, either way we'll...
If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass.
Okay.
It won't be a second reading.
But if it passes, it's in the process, as you said. And, and my other question would be, you kept talking about an independent and appropriate, but I don't see that anywhere in here, I see the city administrator being the decision-maker.
No, there's...
Was appropriate and what's not.
I, I believe that it's been, it's, you go on down, I think the process for doing the election is always, all set up, and so, and many of the decisions that have to be made, like the union oath thing, are set up with independent people. Wait. Talk about neutral fact-finder at H. If you have to have a hearing, that's a hearing, neutral fact-finder, she'll have experience with union representation matters, your hearing's held, the contact person's all of us, have a neutral fact, you have a fact-finder down in I, that is, that's the same...
But that's after it gets through the first four pages.
Fact-finder, fact-finder, and you go on down to the election process, and neutral, a neutral as well.
So you have my duty.
Well, ultimately, the, ultimately, the, the council's got to appoint somebody, but it's not gonna be somebody that's directly connected with the school, with the council or the city. The, in Springfield, the parties got together and agreed on somebody. In fact, the person I recommended to them was a union attorney in Kansas City, who I've known for years, who worked for the National Labor Relations Board, and he did a great job on the election.
But I don't think that's in there like that, though.
I'm sorry?
I don't, can I, for...
Certainly.
I don't, I don't think that's written in there like that, though, and I think that if it's gonna be like that, then it needs to be written in there like that, and not, not give full power to...
There's no full power.
Well, there is.
No, there's not.
Well, somebody ultimately has to make decisions.
Sure, but, but I...
You can't underwatch, reach an agreement.
Sure, I agree, but I think both parties should reach an agreement.
What, what do you, what concerns?
Us?
You seem, you seem to be representing the unit at this point.
Sure, sure, sure.
So what concerns do you have with the bill, the presentation?
Well, what, well, our first...
Language, language.
Sure. Our first concern is that it, the way it came out, I believe the city was well-oiled, where, where that we were forming a union, we made that very plainly, you know, within the, within the last month. We had a meeting, and we had, as the paperwork says, we had 70% of our officers show up at this meeting, unbelievable amount of officers show up at this meeting. We did not expect this many officers to show up, no way. We expected eight or nine, we didn't expect 20. 20 showed up. And then, the other ones that were on duty, just, just after they figured out what we need, they showed up. You know, it's an, we're at 100% underneath sergeant that wants to be unionized. And, and not only do they want to be unionized, but they want to be, they want their families taken care of, and they want, you know, if something happens, as we, we have to pull our, our weapon on duty, we want to know that we have representation there. I mean, that, that's where we're at, guys. And we're a little, we're a little sketchy on the way this appeared on the, on the agenda at four o'clock on Friday. You see what I'm saying? And, and the way it showed up. We didn't have time to get our representation here, within the amount of time that, from Friday till tonight. I mean, do I think that we can get somebody here in two weeks? I, I truly do. But we're asking you guys to table this right now, instead of voting on it, so if we can't get someone here in two weeks, that it doesn't pass in two weeks. You see what we're saying? We're, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of at that, we're kind of at your mercy, I mean, to be honest with you. We understand the administration's side, but, I mean, these guys didn't show up just to, you know, I mean, they truly believe in this. The, and I'm, I'm sure you guys do, too. The, the deal down in St. Louis, you know, we're not, we're not gonna do the FOP, we're gonna do a, a union if, if that happens. But the guy in St. Louis, I mean, they, they placed him somewhere else, and they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to take care of him while all this investigation was going on. And we're not saying that the city won't back us, we're not saying that at all, but we're not gonna ask you to. You, you see what we're saying? We don't know that the city has the funds to do what has to be done in a time of need. So what we're asking of now is to just table, table this, until we can get some representation to look at what's inside this, on our side also. I mean...
And you think that these two weeks are not adequate times for you to...
I don't know that they would be, sir. I mean, we're in the stages of, of negotiations, we have, we are doing our election, our election's on Saturday, so we will have members of the board, we'll have five people, and we don't have a problem setting down with our attorney and these guys, you know what I'm saying, and working out whatever. But we need that time, you know, because this just, this just popped up out of nowhere, which, which made us a little leery.
Mayor, I guess my, my comment on it would be, and I think Detective Burley's right as far as attorneys conferring, it'd be my preference at this point that we proceed on the first reading, we would have two weeks, the department's apparently represented by an attorney, then it would be my suggestion that that determine, go ahead and contact Mr. Ellis, and that they talk procedures and issues, and if there's particular things in, in the ordinance that the department's attorney would think would be objectionable, that would give time to work those things out. Again, this is a procedural thing, not a substantive thing.
Yeah, I concur wholeheartedly, because we don't have to have the second reading two weeks from tonight, if something comes up that needs discussion, we can have it a month from tonight.
And I, and I think we would be okay with that, you know, if you push that...
You all do have counsel.
Sure, yes, sir.
You've got knowledgeable counsel.
Yeah, the attorney's out of St. Louis.
I'd be glad to talk to anybody on Michigan, you know, with your crystal, too. It's not an attempt to jam a guy in a throat, but I certainly see, I certainly see what your concerns are.
Sure.
I think if your counsel looks at this real carefully, you'll see, for example, C and D there, talk about the election process, and that's, there's an effort to be made by getting with your group, to get the independent person to run the election.
Sure. And I don't think, you know, we don't have a problem with it as a whole, we just don't know what's inside that. Do you guys see what we're saying? We don't know, we don't know who's running the show, and we don't know, we don't know who's in, we want somebody smarter than a Lebanon police officer to look at that.
We'd like to think there aren't anybody smarter.
Well, I can guarantee there is.
But you're...
I don't have a bit of problem with both parties agreeing on the procedure.
Yes, sir.
I think that's only fair to both parties, that it's fair to the city, it's fair to the police department. We need to agree on the procedure.
I agree with that, yes, sir.
So if we have to put it off for three weeks, till everybody gets together with ransom and whatever, till everyone is satisfied with this ordinance.
We have a motion and a second, and we're going to have a vote. Now, as I said before, if we need, if I am convinced that it should not go on the agenda two weeks from tonight, it'll not go on the agenda two weeks from tonight. And that would provide at least another two weeks for consideration and discussion.
There's gonna have to be some mutual trust going on here between the parties.
I would rather see us wait even to do the first reading, if we had to, if they all agreed, then why not do first and second as an emergency reading in the same night? You could do that, too. But why do we have to vote on it tonight, if the parties haven't even gotten together yet, and they didn't even have knowledge of it? One of the, one of the main parties in this ordinance wasn't aware of it until, as he said, four o'clock Friday night, or whenever the agenda came online.
And that...
And we didn't get this letter from all of them, knowing that they were at 100% until tonight, and we postponed things for less than that.
I don't, I don't think that we need to set precedent as it relates to emergency clauses, in terms of, as if that was the case, then...
Well, and that's fine, too.
If the speculation was that we were trying to...
Wait six weeks, then, that's fine.
Trying to push something through, I would have put the exercise out tonight. See, from a staff perspective, specifically myself, I was unaware of any of the meetings and/or any of the votes, and if there was a concerted effort, and they had already engaged a counselor, it would have been beneficial for both parties to engage in the discussion mutually, that didn't occur.
Well, and I think that's part of the problem, lack of trust, lack of communication. I think there's, there's a problem.
It's my understanding that they don't have a route, if you would, or a procedure for this.
That provides the procedure, right.
Provides that, is that, is that correct or not?
I was gonna say, I don't see if a yes or no, it's a how.
So it's still gonna be a vote, I mean, you still get to vote, whether you want to go union or not, I mean...
Sure. I think, I think we're just asking that you push this off, that's all we're asking. We're not gonna fight your procedures. You know, we want to make sure what's inside the procedure, or we want our attorneys to make sure what's inside the procedures is, is right for everyone, you know, and it's convenient for both parties.
You are going to have the opportunity to convince ransom and/or myself that the second reading should be put off.
Yes, sir.
There are going to be two readings.
Yes, sir.
So I don't see why there would be an objection to a reading tonight, when we're going to be another two to four weeks before the second reading, and anybody, you know, my door is almost never closed. Any individual or group of individuals is welcome to come in to me and tell me that this ordinance is inappropriate in such and such a way.
Sure.
Mayor, has anyone spoke to you on any of this previous...
I got an inkling that there might be some dissatisfaction towards the end of last week. Anybody else on council?
I don't, I don't think we'll fight it any further. In the end, we just ask that you don't vote it tonight, and that you push it off as far as you, as far as you possibly can, and both sides sit down and talk about it. That's all we're asking. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
No more?
Yes.
The first reading of Council Bill 4051 has been passed, and we'll move forward for a second reading at a future meeting. Now we move to old business. Anybody have anything they want to talk about? And we come to staff comments. Chief? Anything? Chief? Kathy? Lena?
And this is the last call for the Legislative Conference, I know Mayan has signed up. Esther, are you interested in going?
No.
Okay, so, we'll book all that tomorrow, noon, so if you want to go, let's know.
There are some issues that are, come up, and that municipal league will take an interest in, and I have an itemization of them in my office, if you want to look at them and think about them. We're under attack by the telecom industry again. All right, now we'll move to council comments, and I'll start on my extreme right.
Okay. I have a couple of things. First, on the ordinances tonight, not the one we just discussed at length, because that wasn't written by Lena, but the other ones were very well-written, I appreciate that, because now we can track them from the beginning to the end, and declare things, surplus, all in the same ordinance, so I really appreciate that. Also, just for the public, our work sessions are on a schedule. We've been recently slammed, as a council, that we don't make these work sessions known. We meet the first Thursday of every month, in this chamber right here. I know, again, I'm gonna make Chris mad, but he and I disagree. I think the public should come and speak, I don't think they should sit in the audience and be quiet. So at a work session, if you want to come, and you have something to say, and it's on what we're talking about, not something else, if you have something to say about the electric rate, come to a work session and speak up. We won't let... We won't let Chris keep you quiet. It's a slam night on Chris tonight.
I know.
But he's not the only one, because I'm about to upset somebody else, but that's okay. So work sessions, we have one coming up, first Thursday in February.
Which will be presided over by Mrs. Herney.
That's right. And I'll let you talk, because I talk a lot. And then, I hate hearing about things in KJL and LDR, I love you, but I hate when I read my news or I hear it on KJL before I hear it from the city. And that's bad. Recently, and Chief, I think what you did was wonderful, recognizing your officer and two citizens. But I hate hearing on it on KJL and going, when did that happen? You know, Sam did it just a couple of months ago in chambers here. I think we should recognize our officers, our workers, our utility people, everybody in a public forum like this. I don't think it should be in, not in the public's eyes, I think it should be in the public eye. It was a wonderful thing, but I would have liked to have been part of it.
And I apologize, that was an oversight on my part for not informing the council of that.
But I, I'd like to see more things. I miss, and, and, and I'm not saying it just because you're here, guys, because I, I said it recently, too, and.
She did.
Chris disagrees with this, too. You do?
That is not an accurate statement.
Okay, well, it, it stopped a couple, well, I won't name the officer who was the last one sworn in here, but I don't understand why we don't swear them in in front of us anymore. I don't get that. So I guess it's a pick-on-everybody night. Maybe I should have taken an aspirin or something before I came tonight.
Do you feel alone?
Maybe that's it. I have to speak for the.
I invited you to move over.
And I, I told you it would be reflective, me on this side and them on that side tonight. Okay, that's all.
A couple of things. I do want to express my sympathy for the, for the death of Dax, Officer Dax. That was really sad, and sorry to hear it. He was a caretaker, too. I know, that's, that's rough. Lena, when are we going to be, the new online pay and all that, when's that going to be up and going?
End of March.
End of March. Just as a reminder. That's all.
Mr. Elmore?
Yeah, I started to mention this earlier, but I felt comments would probably be more appropriate, because it is just a comment. I'm beginning to wonder if maybe, when we're purchasing vehicles, if we should be, maybe take a closer look at these extended warranties, that what we're actually covering. I know when we buy a vehicle, we get a three-year, $36,000, and as a rule, you get, that's bumper to bumper, and then you get a five-year, $100 powertrain. Is that correct as a rule?
Not, not on the heavy equipment.
And then, I notice, I think in one of the last couple we've purchased, somewhere in there, I saw some of the warranties were $30-some-hundred dollars, which, you know, if we're covered bumper to bumper and then five-year on the powertrain, I see some of the bills here for number eight, would that be a police car, I guess? For $1,300 and some dollars. Maybe that's an extremely old car, I don't know.
It's a 2011, and it was out of warranty. Yet that was for a power steering replacement?
And so it didn't have an extended, it was an 11?
And it was done where?
At Graven.
At Graven. That was a 2011 model. We began getting the extended warranties, I think in 14.
14.
Yeah. I share Mr. Elmore's feelings with regard to extended warranties.
That is one of the reasons that I was looking at these extended warranties, is because of the high cost of maintenance and repair on these vehicles.
Well, I noticed here we've got one for a MCF, oil filter kit, an element, $250. I assume that's an oil change somewhere on something. Is that, is that one of yours?
No, I can just, on my stuff, extended warranties was not offered. They were considered a commercial vehicle, and they, they just simply would not offer them to us. I don't know about the police vehicles, and, and so as of late, they've, they've been able to offer them. Some of them are very pricey. I turned down the opportunity to get extended warranty on a truck we purchased last year. This one here came in on a ton that was, that was pretty reasonable. Couple of events would pay for the warranty.
Well, it's $30-some-hundred dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you, you take out an air conditioner compressor.
Well, on a large, on a large truck, I can see.
Yeah, it don't take much.
But, and there again, it's just a comment, but then here's a module kit we purchased for $420. Now, if that's out of warranty, shouldn't these cars, shouldn't, can our garage be doing some of the work on this instead of extending them? I mean, that's what we have mechanics for.
If I can comment on one thing you just said about oil filters and fuel filters, a couple hundred dollars for one of my fire trucks for just preventive maintenance?
Well, I don't think I'm.
Oil change? That's, that's not uncommon.
This is not routine on a, on a fire truck. I think I'm talking small vehicles here that go to the garage. I see bills on them all the time.
Sure. Just wanted to make that.
And, well, I'm, I'm aware of what the fire trucks cost. That's a totally different situation. But I just thought it's something we might want to take a look at. I mean, I don't know. It just seems like we pay out an awful lot of money for repairs when we're buying extended warranties on things.
I'll do the overlap, I'll look at it.
That module you were talking about was an airbag on a 2008, I believe, pickup. And it was $130 for them to do the check, find out what the actual piece was out of the airbag, because all we got was an airbag tow. And it was, it would have been $75 plus if we had paid somebody else to put the module in for us. They paid $130, and they put the module in. And it was an airbag module that was only available through Lindsay Chevrolet or through Chevrolet.
Well, module kit was $420. Well, I'm not advocating that. But it just seems to me like we've got a garage, and, but still, yet, we spend an awful lot of money, and we get extended warranties, and why do we get all these bills for such high, you know, I don't know. Just something I thought we might want to look at, folks.
Yes, I'll have, I will do that. I will, I will show you guys, because I think this is a conversation, and I was, Mayor's making a comment, I will show you sort of, here's what our mechanics do, here are the number percent of our vehicles that have extended warranties, and here is our overall fleet conversation. And I think that'll give you a little bit more perspective, because I think, there's a little bit of truth in all of that, because I think each little thing will kind of dictate its own conversation, i.e., our mechanics are going to be put in the airbag, resolder back in airbags. So I will do that. If you guys give me 30, 45 days, I'll kind of give you a, an overview of our entire fleet, so that I think that is helpful, because we have over 200 pieces of rolling stock in our asset database.
I understand.
So I think that will give you a better perspective. So if you'll be agreeable, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine. Like I said, I was just making a comment.
I actually, no, but it's a valid comment, because I think we need.
We need to, we need to save all the money we can save.
Absolutely. I'm absolutely.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Just want to take the opportunity to echo Mrs. Herney's comments about recognition. This is one of the few things that we can do, is to publicly recognize people that take care of us. And as you all know, probably, my son's a fireman, my two nephews were police officers, one's a patrolman now. So I feel, well, I know where you're at, know where you're coming from, and I appreciate what you do, these public recognitions and swearing in things, as a way that we can publicly thank you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler?
Ralph, 66th Committee had a meeting at noon today. We are making progress. Things are moving right along.
That leaves us with the mayor. And I want to reiterate for the benefit of you folks on the right, that my door is open. I am aware, we all know that seven years ago, there was massive attack on the police department. But I am aware of no retaliation, and I would take it with a great deal of dissatisfaction if I learned that that was not true. My door is open. If you've been retaliated against for something that you should have been doing, then I'd like to know about it. You know, there's, anytime you have a group that includes this number of people, there are going to be people that do things that they shouldn't do. But if you are following your job and run afoul of somebody, and feel that you're being dealt with unfairly, we all know that union's coming, so that, that's immaterial. It's going to happen. But on the day-to-day basis, if something has happened to you that you feel is retaliation, wrongful retaliation for something, then I want to know about it. And I'm open to a motion to return.
So.
Second.
All in figure.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same.
Ain't no.